The Rochester City Council Candidate Forum starts now.
Good morning and welcome to our ABC 6 Rochester Post Bulletin debate for candidates running for Rochester City Council in wards 2, 4, 6, and for Rochester's City Council President's soon-to-be-vacated seat by current Council President Randy Staber. I am your co-moderator, Betsy Singer, with ABC 6 News, along with Randy Peterson with the Rochester Post Bulletin. This is an informal debate of sorts. It is being broadcast live right now on ABC 6's social media platforms. For those watching live online, do feel free to write in any questions that you have for the candidates in the comment section. Our producers are fielding those questions and we may have time to ask candidates questions from the public. For those who are watching online, we know that the mask mandate, the governor's mask mandate, went into effect at midnight last night. And since we do have social distancing in the room that we are in here at 125 Live in Rochester, for clarity purposes, we are not requiring the candidates to wear their masks. And we will have five segments this morning. Each will be 30 minutes with a round of candidates from the wards. We will have two segments because we have so many candidates from Ward 6. We are starting with Ward 2, and with that, we will start with the first round of questions. Oh, I'm sorry. I have to introduce them.
I was going to say, I thought you were going to introduce them.
I know, I wanted to get right into the questions. Ward 2 incumbent, Michael Wojcik, is a small business owner that specializes in providing financial services to churches and nonprofits. There is much more to your bio that I could say, Michael, but I'm going to give you one minute each candidate will have for their opening statements. Our next candidate is Mark Bransford. He is a software programmer with a PhD in astrophysics. He and his wife have four children and have lived in Rochester for 19 years. Denise Welty is a small business owner with a background in early childhood education and continues to be very active with education and advocating for children and equity when it comes to education among kids. So with that, now we will start with the questions.
Welcome, candidates. I'm going to start with Mark Bransford on this, but I'll have all three of you answer the question. The city recently approved a plan for 5.1 million in Federal Cares Act funding in response to the coronavirus pandemic. What additional steps should the city take to help individual businesses and individuals in the community recover during these uncertain times?
Well, I'm glad that four months later after the pandemic started that they've passed the Cares Act that starts giving small business owners money finally. The most important thing that the city council needs to do going forward is simply listen and stop being so tone deaf to the needs of small business owners. Actually, went downtown and talked to a small business owner to ask her, you know, how's it going? And she nearly broke down crying. She said that on the heels of the pandemic, with all the construction, capital improvement projects, the heart of the city project, just as they were getting back on their feet, now they're cratered all over again. We've seen a restaurant downtown close, and we really need to sit down and figure out how to start listening to small businesses. The way the mask mandate was just done is they had language on a Thursday, they had different language on a Monday, they got passed, and then they told the businesses to go fish. That was wrong.
Thank you. Denise Welty, same question.
Sure. So I was really excited with the Cares Act and the 5.5 million awarded to the city. And it looks like 750,000 of it will go towards investment in people-oriented programs through, to provide jobs for people facing unemployment. And we just heard this morning that McNeilis is laying off over 200 and some people. I just heard from another source that Crenlow is laying off 200, or I don't know if it's 200 some people as well going forward. And I think this is just the start of it. And, you know, to be able to get together with the small business owners and really, you know, hunker in and figure out a solution, how we best, you know, provide for them so to get them back up on their feet and running. As a small business owner myself, Mid-City CPR, I haven't taught a class since March, but I'm excited because I got one booked for August. But it's really important that we support the folks in our community going forward. I mean, I don't think we've seen it all yet. I think there's a lot more coming down the pipe with businesses closing and unemployment rising. Thank you.
Thank you. And same question, Michael Wojcik.
Thank you. I would add that the 5.1 million is a good start. And additionally, we passed ours before the county passed theirs. So we need to be taking a look and making sure we're covering all the gaps. You've heard a lot of focus on small business. When we established our priorities, I specifically focused on the people of this community. Once the eviction moratorium is going to end, we're going to face a tidal wave of evictions and even more homeless in our community. And I think that if we don't set our priorities as helping those most in need of the community first, we're not necessarily going to see that. The city, we went out of our way to prioritize the needs of people and what we can do with those very limited funds to help in those areas. And we're going to try and work with our partners to leverage that money as much as we can, knowing that we have a terrible challenge for a pandemic that we should not be facing like this.
Thank you.
A poll came out four days ago regarding race relations on the national level. More voters acknowledging symptoms of racism but disagree about what causes it. We know Rochester has some of the highest racial disparities for a community of our size population-wise. Do you believe Rochester does enough to address equity among minority groups? What steps can we take to make it more equitable? Michael, we'll start with you.
Equity is something that's been a cornerstone of my leadership in the community for some time. We actually fought a substantial battle when we passed the 40-year late update of our comprehensive plan. There are four pillars of the community in that plan. We fought a battle to keep equity as one of those pillars. We need to look at all of our policies that we're passing through an equity lens, and we need to work with our partners to make sure they understand the ramifications. We have the potential of creating a middle school location where we would have created a majority-minority incredibly wealthy school in one area so that we could have a wealthy school in another area. Those are the kind of things as community planners, we need to be leaders on and make sure we establish, we cut these inequities out before they happen.
Denise?
Sure. So I echo that to a certain point, but I also think that we have to have a lot more conversations. And I think, again, with an education background, I think it has to start very young. And we need to figure out and come up with a solution that works for all and how we bridge this gap. This is crazy. Through mentorship programs, and we've done some of that, volunteer networks is important that we're there supporting the folks that need it. I, you know, and I said in the last one, we need to bring back some vocational schools. We have programs in Rochester that folks aren't tapping into to bridge that in qualities as far as like apprenticeships through the unions. They offer on-the-job training, paid raises, and your schooling's paid to, you know, to lead you to a path of success. So, you know, we need more programs like that. I was really impressed with the new pipeline from the schools to worker for 21 with Mayo and IBM and RCTC and RPS, all coming together and working kind of along the same ways within our city. It's hard to talk in a minute, I'm just saying.
I know. We will finish up this line of questions with Mark. And then after this line of questions, we will give each candidate two minutes to respond to give you more time. Mark, you want to go ahead with your response?
Yeah. Equity also involves, and I agree that education's important, that we need training and trade schools. We also need equitable jobs in this town. Right now, we've let 1,000 good jobs go. We've lost manufacturing, which unfortunately disproportionately, you know, are oftentimes at the lower socioeconomic end of the spectrum. But we need to bring jobs like that back and to help them get meaningful jobs back in this town. What I won't do to help increase equity is tweet a negative narrative that champions equity when really the data that was given was highly preliminary. There are state laws in place to make sure that all schools are balanced, that have racial equality.
With that said, let me do a follow-up. Michael, this goes to you along those lines and actually comes from a viewer, Hern Kay, who lives in Ward 2. Mr. Wojcik, it is obvious from your social media posts, you do not like our president, yet you use social media very much in the same way he does. Some would call some of your social media posts bullying or intimidation. Do you truly believe this is a proactive way to do business as an elected city official?
Well, I see that as less of a question, more of a political statement, but I'll certainly take it as a question. Yeah, the President of the United States is an absolute embarrassment. He's a racist, and our country's never been in worse shape in my lifetime than under his leadership. The pandemic shouldn't be this bad. And what I would say is that I believe in transparency, and a lot of the information that I put out actually creates conversation within the community. And it's important to realize that I always have a focus on the issue as well because I've been doing this job for a long time and had a lot of success in the community. We've done phenomenal changes, and that's through the conversations that we're having. Honest communication is not always pleasant communication. But for the example that was brought up in terms of the school district, while I hear that being accused as a false narrative, it does appear that a number of laws were broken by the school board, and it seems like the comment that I made was spot-on. And, but that's your roles in the media to actually do the Data Practice Act requests and get that information because what I, the information that I put out, I believe it to be entirely accurate, and I believe it's all of your roles to verify that.
With that said, as part of the media, we did check with the Attorney General's Office to see, and they said, yes, that you did contact them about the issue at hand. However, they are not taking on the case because they do not see laws having been broken, and that they call it a civil suit.
Now, this is very misleading on your part, and the gentleman right next to you can verify this as well. I did contact the Attorney General's Office, and as a matter of fact, what they said is this is not something that the Attorney General's Office does. You instead need to contact the Office of Administration, which I did do. And their responses were very enlightening about a number of laws that appeared to have been broken by the schools. Now, maybe you didn't do that follow-up work, but I, as the community leader, felt it was important to do my job and bring sunlight and bring transparency to the process.
Very good, sir. Denise, let's talk to you about the use of social media and how you, as a council member, would use various platforms to get your message or your concerns across to the public and your constituents.
Right. You know, good question, Betsy, and it's a hard one, but I've always been the person that, that has always taken the high road and printed the facts and asked other people what their opinion is before I form mine because that's who I'm going to be representing. So I use it as a positive tool and always, like I said, always, you know, print the facts and take the high road and not, you know, depart from that at all, so.
Mr. Bransford, kind of along those lines, you have made it no secret that you do not agree with the way Mr. Wojcik does his job. You have also said that is one of the reasons why you decided to run for City Council. Is that the case, and what would you do differently as a leader?
Yeah, let me be very, very clear. I'm running based on three very integrated pillars: balanced growth, fixing the relationship between the city and the school board, and integrating the arts with business. So I'm not running against anyone. I'm actually running for my platform. But having said that, one of my platforms is fixing the relationship between the City Council and the school board because I believe the incumbent has materially damaged that all by himself. The best example is that tweet. That tweet contained a negative, or a false narrative. He cannot prove Michael Munoz hid anything because that's not true. He cannot prove that there were laws broken by the school board because that's not true. And the tweet included stirring the pot during an election to help steer people to vote against members that were running. It seems awfully strange to me that that tweet would contain inflammatory information that needed to be proven first, then it needed to be handled in a collegial way amongst the governing bodies, not tweeted as if it were a fact when it isn't.
Mark, thank you. Do you have a rebuttal for that, Michael?
I would simply say again, and I want to go back to the comment that you made that the Attorney General's Office said there was nothing there. That is a false statement on your part. That is not what the Attorney General's Office said. I'm sure they gave you the same direction as everyone else. And what I'm simply going to say is, I am a big believer in transparency, and I believe the narrative is correct, and I also believe that I, as an elected official, am free to weigh in on other races. God knows I'm going to weigh in on what I think of the president. That said, there is a process that this can go through, and I think it's very important that, you know, the open meetings laws, it pertains to how closed meetings are noticed, how it pertains to how documents can be created in public settings, and how it pertains to whether or not the audio recordings that are legally required to be released have been released. These are all open questions. Now, perhaps I am entirely wrong, and I will certainly own that if I am. But again, you in the media need to follow up because I do believe a number of laws have been broken based on the response that I received and the guidance that I received.
Thank you. Randy?
All right. This question, let's start with Denise. Most, if not all, the City Council candidates have expressed a desire to limit property taxes during this time. The result could likely end up in some belt tightening. What would you see as your first target when it comes to potential budget cuts?
That's a good question. I think we'd have to look at really good, take a really hard look at the budget and prioritize because this is, this is new to all of us. None of us have gone through this pandemic like we are, and we're just seeing the beginning of it, in my, in my beliefs. And going into '21, I think we have to be very careful and frugal in how we spend our money going forward to make sure that the needs are met first and not the wants. So I don't have in particular anything other than I think we have to slow down on some of the beautification in Rochester and things that we can just put aside for a little bit and focus on what really the needs are to keep our city open and going and get people back to work. So that's where I'm at. I really want to take that hard look at that, at the budget. Like I said, I'm very frugal, I'm very responsible. I worked as the Area Labor Council volunteer for the Secretary Treasurer for Southeast Minnesota, and I know the hard lines, and I know to be accountable, and I know how to be a really good steward for the taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Bransford?
First of all, I wouldn't increase RPU fees. I wouldn't have streetlight taxes. I would cut all the stealth tax. I would shelve the rapid transit system, and I wouldn't hire a million-dollar consultant to figure out what to do with one of the plants that closed down for manufacturing. I would concentrate solely on very specific public works and safety, public works, public safety. For example, I wouldn't advocate for buying new cars for the city every year. We don't need to do that. We could put it in a mechanic shop and they could tune it up. I would also ask the City Council to give back their raises. They say it's peanuts, I don't care. We're all in this together.
One quick follow-up, I'll ask Michael Wojcik this. You referenced a plant consultant?
I believe that's what I've heard, that the city is interested in hiring a consultant because one of the developers backed out of developing a beta. I don't know the name exactly. And so I, what I've heard is that there is a consultant being considered to be hired to figure out what to do with that property, how to redevelop it. That doesn't have to be done right now.
So that's not money that's already spent? I just wanted to.
Yeah, but it's heading in that direction. And my, my point is, is that when you're in office for as long as some of the people on the council are, it becomes so city-focused, they still go for fees. We need to think about the community. We need to think about what will help the community. And if those things that can be cut will help keep property taxes and fees down, that's what we need to do.
That helps, thanks. And Michael Wojcik, same question.
Yeah, to your second one, I have absolutely no idea what he's talking about on a million-dollar consultant for an industrial property. I am absolutely clueless. I have no idea where this information came from, so I can't speak to that. What I will say is, in terms of the budget, the budget is incredibly complicated. And I have long been an advocate for not necessarily increasing the total revenues but shifting property taxes towards fees that are shared more equitably. For example, if you have a multimillion-dollar hospital, it's very likely that they're actually paying zero in property taxes, which is the primary way that we fund it. And what happens is, when you focus everything on property taxes, small businesses and homeowners get hit disproportionately hard. So my goal has been to take some of these fees that we are allowed to do by law, put in place these fees, and have an equal, an equal offset in terms of the, the property taxes. We're not necessarily increasing revenues. I have, I was a longtime supporter of making sure that these positions paid enough that people can focus on this full-time. If people are not willing to give this job a full-time effort, they just aren't going to be successful. It really does need to be a full-time job, and I stand 100% behind that. Lastly, I would say that in terms of priorities of where we can potentially cut, I think we have to look at some of the traditional mid-level management and some of the areas where our programs are perhaps not necessarily getting to the intended outcome of what the community is looking for. We actually, as a city, continue to be incredibly lean for a city of this size in terms of our staffing, so our ability to cut is very challenged. We were able to make the adjustments this year with about 4% across the board cuts, and I think we'll probably be able to do something similar next year without having to increase the property taxes. Again, my goal would be to lower them by putting some of these more equitable fees that everyone plays, pays in place.
Michael, with that said, can you be more specific on some of your cuts? With mid-level management, what is it that you mean by that and who?
Well, you know, what I would say is that we have, one of the things that we've been driving towards for a long time is actually something I've learned from the county. And I've actually, for more than eight years, I actually do a twice-a-month sit-down with county board and school board members, and that's been actually really helpful because despite the narrative you sometimes hear, we've kind of been leaders in keeping these discussions going. And the, the sense that I get going forward is that, in particular, in some of our community amenity-type places, we do tend to have a lot of managers running facilities where there's some very good organizations that can help us run facilities, and we can take all of these existing middle-management positions and consolidate them into a single facilities management person or department that can do it a lot more efficiently and probably partner better with organizations like 125 Live where we are right now, but also things like Graham Arena where there's some things going on that I'm uncomfortable for, the National Volleyball Center. Public Works and Police isn't going to change a lot, so some of these other areas are what we have to, have to focus on.
Very good. Let's, Mark, did you have something that you wanted to, do you have the information when you talked about the million-dollar consultant, about where that came from?
It's just what I've heard through, through a couple of people. I don't have proof that it's happening, but the fact that it's even being discussed at any level anywhere just goes to show you that we've been spending way too much money on million-dollar consultants. And even if it's not true, that's fine, I would retract that, but we need to knock off all the really high-paid consultants.
Okay. Michael, let's start with you on this next question. Before COVID-19, so much of city business focused on DMC growth, development. DMC being described as the $6 billion project to turn Rochester into a global medical tourism destination. Once we have a vaccine and COVID-19 is no longer the leading headline, we are all hoping we get back to somewhat of a normal life as it was before this pandemic. Where do you put DMC planning and development on your list of priorities?
Well, DMC is unique in the standpoint that it has certain dollars that are allocated for certain things, and they're not dollars that we move back and forth. And I think the future phases of DMC are going to be a lot more exciting for the community. If you go downtown right now and everything's dug up, it's because we're replacing sewers that are 100 years old, which is not very glamorous. We all understand that that's not a whole lot of fun. But some of the finishing touches and some of the connectivity and some of the great places that we're creating, we know as a community, when you create great places, it's not just good for the visitors, it's good for us as well. I was intimately involved in the creation of the Uptown Neighborhood through that transit project and also Cascade Lake. These are the kind of projects where I like to focus energy and resources on. So we create great places that make us not only a good destination, but also a great place for the folks that live here, and I think that's how we best leverage those DMC dollars.
Very good, thank you. Mark?
Right now, with the pandemic and the number of people who may or may not be going downtown, commuting downtown, I have a feeling it's going to be a lot of people. And the fact that this is occurring, people are, are not going to be going downtown, we need to step back and really rethink the whole thing. Transit plan, how we're developing things. I think DMC needs to get back to its original statutory charter of just fixing up downtown and getting out of the game of championing developments that the city should be in charge of doing. There's been too much mission creep. So back that off and just step back and rethink things. Things can go on hold for a little while. Yeah, they're replacing 100-year-old sewers downtown. Did that have to be done right now? No, it didn't. Did the heart of the city have to happen right now? It could have been shelved for a little while. Yes, it's on a schedule, we can figure out how to change schedules. These are the kinds of things that we need to think about going forward. It's a new world out there, so it shouldn't be business as usual.
Denise?
I am here. So with DMC, I think they're, they're doing everything they said they would do. They're staying on track, and nobody predicted this pandemic that we're all in right now. And I too, when I go downtown, I'm like, wow, like, why did I even drive down here? I think it would have been faster to walk. You know, that sort of thing. But I think, you know, they're doing, they're doing okay. I want to see it completed and moving forward as fast as we can, if that's possible. But as we get setbacks and things happen, we have to take a look, a hard look at it and see where we're at and how, how we can proceed without uprooting the businesses so much downtown because that does affect everybody. It affects all of us that visit downtown. So that's where I am.
As development continues along the primary transit corridors and travel corridors into downtown, has the City Council done enough to protect nearby neighborhoods? Let's start with Mark Bransford.
No.
Is there, is there anything else that they could?
One of the things, I paused for.
Sorry.
No, they, they haven't. There are some very intrusive developments that people did not want, that the City Council went ahead and voted for. And there are a number of them, which I could cite. The new transit corridor, which includes the lot at Cascade Lake downtown, plans narrow that street significantly. And it makes me very nervous because there are a lot of people now, because we've made building in this town so expensive, that are now commuting. We're going to narrow the road. People are still going to park downtown, although that's kind of up in the air with what's going on with the pandemic. So you're narrowing major arteries. Where is that traffic going to go when they want to go to park downtown? Right around the main artery and through the core neighborhoods. No one's talking about that, but that's most likely what's going to happen. With RX 2, you're going to have mixed development, high-density, low-density. And there are a lot of people snapping up houses in the core neighborhoods that are being turned into rentals. And when you get a few in a row, boom, infill development, mixed density. That's, that's not protecting our core neighborhoods, that's not keeping their character.
Thank you. Denise Welty?
Can you repeat that?
Sure, I can. As the development, as development continues along primary transit corridors into the downtown, has the City Council done enough to protect nearby neighborhoods?
You know, and that's, that's really hard for me to answer personally, but I can say where I live in southwest Rochester, just across the Sixth Street Bridge area of Fawall, I worry about the children and with all the increased traffic and the narrowing of streets, and the noise is insane for us now. We never used to hear the traffic like we do today, and that comes with growth, of course. Another concern is, besides safety, is, like you said, for us to get in and out of the city in our neighborhoods, and sometimes just to get out of our neighborhood is jammed with hospital traffic and workers going in. So, you know, and I, it's worrisome to think that the roads could become even more narrow. But then again, we take it back to transportation and we find alternative ways it's going to work for everybody in the community. Those that live downtown and perhaps don't own a car, they need to know that they have a pathway or a safe way to get into, into their jobs. And out in, outlying areas too, we need more parking lots, better transportation that fits. And outlying areas, too, we need more parking lots, better transportation that fits us all. So I think it'd come with time. You know, I'd be really excited to be in that conversation on city council.
Thank you. And Michael Wojcik, same question.
Well, one thing I can tell you is, change is incredibly hard, and change is inevitable. And we have to have an adult conversation about what kind of change we want as a community. There's really two paths when you're experiencing growth. You can sprawl out as a community, which, let's be very clear what that means. That means substantially higher property taxes on everyone, including small businesses, forever. Or we can figure out how to do smart growth in the areas where it's appropriate. Obviously, I'm a big fan of the second one. One thing that makes these adult conversations a lot more scary is when a lot of misinformation is being put out. For example, I heard that Second Street would be narrowed. That's not the case. We're going to maintain four lanes. The allocation might change, but there's, most of the right-of-way is actually going to be wider for a number of different uses. It's important to realize that the best thing that we can do as civic leaders is understand what changes, where change is appropriate to occur. And certainly along our major transit lines, whether that's Second Street, Fourth Street, Southeast, Broadway, North and South, we know that those are good locations to put some additional density. So when we have those changes, how do we work with neighborhoods? Well, not everyone's going to be happy. That's just the nature of change. But neighborhood associations have had a huge role in the developments. Almost all of the developments that have been passed by the city council do actually end up coming with strong neighborhood support. For example, one of the more contentious ones, the Berkman Project, which is right across from St. Mary's. 14 months of neighborhood discussions with a lot of folks on what the neighborhood could benefit from versus what the developer needed to make the project successful resulted in a project that, when it finally went to the city council, it had the unanimous support of the Committee on Urban Design and Environment Planning and Zoning Commission, city council, and the Neighborhood Association Presidents from the Falwell, Cusky, and Southwest. These projects are not easy to do, but it's going to allow mixed-income, mixed-density housing to go into places where we know that's beneficial. And I know that's a hard conversation for people to have, but the end result, I think, is something positive for the entire community.
Thank you.
As we conclude and getting close to the end of our half hour, we will go over a little bit on this half hour, because we will conclude with closing statements. Denise, we will start with you, and you have two minutes to give your closing statement and what you want your constituents in your ward to know upon leaving the debate today.
Okay. Just a few things about me. Yes, I'm Denise Walty. I'm a third generation here in Rochester. My kids are fourth, and my grandchildren are fifth generation. Love this city with all my heart. Children have been my passion my entire life, and education as well. I have, you know, had a lot of opportunities in my lifetime that will prove me to be a really good candidate with a level head and a lot of strength and a lot of positivity, because that's who I am going forward. I've spent several years as a childcare provider, ran a very good, successful business. And I tell you what, having kids come back 20, 30 years later and say their best years were the years in my home, and they are who they are today with lots of love and gratitude towards me, means the world. And I treat everyone the same and fairly, and I believe all children in this world deserve the same equal start to life, and that begins with education. I've had the privilege of working in inner cities of Baltimore, LA, Boston, just to name a few, Chicago, where I've actually gone door-to-door in the inner cities to work with childcare providers and early childhood education folks to get them on a pathway with their children to success, which is really important. Half the time, they didn't realize all the things available to them to lead to success. And to be able to provide that and see success with these families across the country was amazing. That's a little bit about who I am. I also worked for Service Employees International Union and did a lot of great things with them. I worked, again, with education all the way up through the University of Minnesota and Hamlin University, working with adjunct professors who don't make a good living wage, to be honest with you. And, you know, it's just things like that that are just, I'm very passionate about. I grew up in Southport, and I don't know if there's anyone that remembers Southport, but it's got its name from being south of the airport, which was in the Meadow Park area in southeast Rochester. So anyway, my time's up already. You know, they did have a lot more time than I did. Just saying. Okay. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you, Denise. Mark Bransford?
Yes. I believe it's more than time for change in Ward 2. And the reason why I say that is, for example, the Berkman. There was 75% to 80% opposition to that, and there was a false narrative that there was universal agreement. That was wrong. And it continues and continues and continues. What's happening with the school board is another example of, that's not how you do things. You don't go into the public and stir the pot. There is a lack of collegiality. There's a lack of dignified leadership. We need to take issues like with the school board and let the governing bodies figure out how to fix those things. We have to work with the school board experts and figure out why they think that particular location was the best, because it was. There is data that definitely shows that. I don't have time to share that with you. It's important that we work together, that we don't have intemperate outbursts that materially damage relationships between the school board, the county. I want to come in. I want to listen to the community. I want to integrate their views and make a decision based on that. Even if I think something is good for the city and my constituency don't think it is, that thing I think is good for the city better be really, really good for the city. And if it is, the constituents will likely agree with that. I will not vote time and again for high-end luxury apartments when we need affordable housing. Those are the things I won't do.
Thank you, Mr. Bransford. Michael Wojcik?
Thank you, everybody, for taking the time to tune in. There's this, in addition to this forum, there's a lot of others out there, and I encourage everyone to be an informed voter. Go ahead and take a look. Back in the days when we could actually travel and other countries weren't afraid to have Americans go there, that's one of the things I really like to do, is go out and see the world and learn from other places. And one of the things that I really learned a good lesson on is hiking the Tour du Mont Blanc, which part of that goes through Switzerland. And there's these little yellow signs there that say, they don't tell you how much distance. They tell you how many minutes to the next town. And when I first got into Switzerland, I could not keep up with those times. But by the end of it, I had my mountain legs, and I could make those times. And I was so proud of myself. You know, I'd pull up at a pub in one of these small towns and say, "Yeah, it took me a while, but I'm finally going the same speed as the locals." And they're, they look at me like, "Oh, good, good for you." It's like, "Yeah, those yellow signs." I'm like, "Oh, those times." The local senior citizen center, they go out and do walks, and that's how they set the times. So what I learned right there is that don't necessarily make assumptions about people that you're predisposed to. And we have this incredible reservoir of talent, whether it be renters, who sometimes get belittled in this community, or seniors who can do a tremendous amount to help with equity in the community. It's important that we reach out to neighborhoods, and we try and serve the people, not the special interests. And, you know, I absolutely stir the pot. If you think that a good trait of a leader is that they're afraid to stir the pot, I'm not a good choice for you. I got to be honest about that. I do look into things with a very critical eye. I don't serve the school board. I don't serve the county board. I don't serve the people who've had no-bid contracts downtown from the city forever. We investigate these things. We took a hard look at the Convention and Visitors Bureau, saw a lot of inappropriate behavior, booted those folks out, and got a new system. We're saving $1 million a year, which benefits all of you. And sure, those people, the Joe Powers, the Andy Schfolius, they don't like me very much. They'll pay anything to get rid of me, but I work for you.
Candidates, thank you very much. These are our three candidates for Ward 2 for Rochester City Council. We will take a quick break and come back with our candidates for Ward 4.